All right, we will now call the Avon Park City Council Regular Meeting to Order for February 24th at 6:00 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation be given by Pastor George Hall of the Avon Park Lakes Baptist Church.
First Timothy 2:1 and 2 says, "First of all then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way." Let's pray. Father God, we love you and we thank you for this day. Lord, I thank you for each one of these that stand here before us tonight. Lord, I pray that you bless them, that you guide them. Lord, we just thank you for this community and how you continue to lead us. Lord, we thank you for all of those that lead. Lord, we thank you for our county commissioners. We thank you for our governor. We thank you for our president. Lord, we pray that you surround them with wise people who give them godly counsel all the days of their life. Bless us this evening as we handle this business. Lord, may it be found favorable in your sight. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, item number four, we have an update on the CDBG grant.
Can I ask one quick question? I didn't see where we had the minutes of our last meeting in our packet.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Corbett, please give your name and address, please, or name and company.
Corbett Alday with Guardian Community Resources, offices Dade City, Florida. Good evening.
Good evening.
Is this on? Am I on?
It is.
Thank you all for having us once again. We, the CDBG, we do have release of funds finally. It took the state two months to respond to our submission of the environmental review and release of funds, and another month or two to answer all their questions, which has become normal now. So, but we do have release of funds now. We can spend money. We have finished the ads for a contractor and applicants and the forms, the application forms, and submitted those to Kim and Debbie. So, as long as they're okay, they can be advertised. And the applications, the council said they wanted every council member to receive those applications and forms, so they're available.
Okay.
That's where we are.
Any questions for Corbett?
So, I know that you were going to have a meeting for the public to discuss how the grant was going to work and how they would qualify and stuff. Is that still going to take place?
Yes, we're going to have an orientation. We just need to discuss that with staff and pick a date that's, you know, convenient, workable to the city as well as to us.
Okay.
So, and that will go in the ad.
And we'll make sure it's not a Friday, so.
Okay. Do you still need that C A T F?
The C A T F will still have a role in looking at the applications once they're received and ranked, you know, a preliminary ranking based on the Housing Assistance Plan. So, there would be a C A T F meeting at that time to look over, you know, to kind of look over the application list of applicants and then recommend that ranking to the council. The only thing, only thing, the only other thing would be conflicts of interest, where they would have to review conflicts of interest and make a recommendation to the council as well if those came up.
I just want to make a point. The Citizens Advisory Task Force, which is what that C A T F is, used to be the South Side Advisory CRA Board. They no longer are, so we don't have a C A T F right now. And we're going to have to create one. And I was just going to suggest that we use the current CRA Advisory Board, which is, who's on there right now, as our C A T F. And it would require them to meet on occasion with this certain thing, with this project. But it's either them or we have to create a whole new board.
My thought was, I thought that since the duties of that C A T A Board was the South Side, that it would automatically retrieve to the Advisory Board now.
Yeah, but now you have more people on it. You've got airport and you've got Main Street people on it. Are you saying to go back to what the South Side used to be?
No, no. What I'm saying is that the Board should be consisted of, comprised of the people that's on that Board. Because this grant is for Avon Park, not just the South Side.
Of the unified Advisory Board.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was, get that Board if they, if they want to, because I mean, they're going to have to meet separate of their Advisory Board meetings anyway. So, they would maybe meet the same day, but at a different time.
If they're amenable to it, I'd be all for it.
Yeah, but do we need to make that official for state purposes?
Yes, you would have to, as a motion, you would have to actually appoint them.
So, it's not on the agenda, but if we get that out of the way right now, then we're done with that.
Yep.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we create the Citizens Advisory Task Force to be composed of the current CRA Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Anything from our attorney on this?
On your face, are you okay? You okay with that?
Yes.
I'm about to say it.
No.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passionanamous.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the housing program?
I just got one question.
Yes.
When could we expect the applications to be out? At what point?
Whenever staff feels comfortable, whenever they pick an orientation day and they feel comfortable placing it in the paper.
But no time sooner. We can't look at it before it gets advertised?
Yes.
Oh, we can't?
The city has it.
Okay.
The city has both. The city has the contractor notice for the paper, the applicant notice for the paper, the application form, and then the contractor form.
So, I have been receiving calls and I see a couple of those individuals in the audience that were inquiring about this particular grant. So, will the contractors and the residents all be able to come to this public meeting where you're going to discuss both of those things?
Yes.
Okay. And it's just that date that we're waiting on? And I know that the council at one point had decided we were going to do this for a month and a half or one-month advertising. I forgot what it was that we had decided.
Sixty days.
Sixty days? Okay.
Was the last discussion.
Okay. Okey-dokey.
Very good.
Anything else on housing?
Nope.
Okay. I have a brief update on CDBG mitigation, which is really important for you. If you look at the packet I gave you, you see there in Highlands County, the green area is a top priority area. That's Avon Park zip code. If you look at the second page, you look, you see all the areas that they looked at when they did the action plan, which HUD has the action plan right now. When that's approved, then they can put out an application form, and then we'll have more details. But all of these areas were looked at. So, safety and security, that could be hardening, you know, a police station. That could be a fire department. It could be anything, critical facilities, okay? It could be food and water. It could be sewer. It could be correction of infiltration and inflow into your sewer when it floods, okay? It could be new water and sewer potentially. It could be retrofitting and upgrading your plants with electrical, upgrading electrical and putting in new permanent generators, okay?
Corbett, let me ask you a question. Could this be consisted for a shelter, a homeless shelter?
Yes.
Or something, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
That's one of the areas.
Good.
Health and medical could be hardening the hospital, those kind of things. The electrical grid could be, it could be clearing trees. It could be those kind of things to keep the electrical grid consistent. Infrastructure could be the same types. It could be communication facilities, like towers, equipment. Could be flood control, like a master flood control plan, and ponds and changing culverts and even the whole, the whole city. The whole city is 51% LMI, so you would meet the LMI criteria for this program, for the whole city. And then hazardous materials, that could be like dealing with a hazardous contamination. The next page, it gives you more details of what they want. This is, I picked the specific, most important pages out of their plan rather than giving you the whole plan. But water, sewer, solid waste, communications, energy, transportation, health and medical, public infrastructure, to identify specific risk. So, you can see that this could be a really big deal for the city. I don't know how much they're going to allow you to apply for, but it might be $5 million. It might be $20 million. It's 600, it's a $600 million program just of the state of Florida. There are, on the next page, you can use it for matching requirements of hazard mitigation grants. Those are FEMA grants. Those could be a bear, but if you have one or want to seek one, you can actually use this money to make up the match instead of having to use city money. The ineligible activities, this is, this helps a lot clarify some things. They did put the ineligible activities in the plan. You can't fund buildings for general conduct of government, so City Hall is not going to be eligible. Emergency response services, like paying for an ambulance, won't be eligible. But hardening the building, that kind of thing, the fire station, those kind of things. The critical facility, emergency operations center could be, or a shelter could be. Mortgage payoff, enlargements of dams or levees beyond original design, and then assistance to private utilities. Those are the things that are not eligible. There's a lot of other things in here that give you more details about what they're thinking. I encourage you to look at them, ask us questions. We'll tell you what we know. We are tracking the action plan and the application. I encourage you to think about things that, you know, this is a once-in-a-lifetime deal. You might, in these months, may never come again, so.
What's the time limit to get these requests in?
It hasn't been advertised yet. The action plan hasn't been approved by HUD yet for the state of Florida. When it is, then they'll put together the application form and put out a notice of funding availability, and then we'll know how long we have left to apply.
Is this likely only to be approved in ready counties, or is this going to be pretty broad?
Every county that's on this map, that's colored in, is eligible.
And the green?
The green is the highest priority.
Okay.
Call them HUD, they're calling it HUD Designated Most Impacted Area, and then the yellow is State Designated Most Impacted Area. So, green, the green area will actually be considered first.
So, you say like this, this one is Highlands County, it's only a little portion there, and so you say that's Avon Park?
Right.
Okay.
Can these be used as a match for something else?
Yes. It's actually a specific activity in the, in the plan if you want to use it as a matching grant.
What do you think is the most common in terms of these uses? I mean, I don't see utility, infrastructure improvements, not enhancements, but perhaps new?
I would look at new sewer, new water, if there's any kind of problem with water quality. Again, you got to have a risk element. You got to address a risk. New sewer, if people have to pay for these above-ground mounted septic systems and there's problems in the area, then I would say new sewer, or it's addressing a risk. So, we'll know more when the application comes out, but at this level, everything is on the table, as long as we're addressing a risk.
Would a package plant that's falling apart be a good risk that we could connect in?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, you need, you would need the evidence from DEP that the plant has got problems. So, you need those letters from DEP. You need, you know, any kind of evidence that you, that getting rid of that plant would be mitigating a risk.
Upgrades to handle industrial waste?
To existing sewer, is what you're saying, right?
Right.
I don't know. Hazard materials is on here, so.
Heavy metals are hazardous?
Right. So, it may be worth asking.
Got it.
Who's going to ask?
The city. If we put the application together, it'll be the city asking. Now, I'll take any proposal from the first public hearing that you want to, and we'll send it to them and see if they, you know.
They may change their rules, yeah. They may change a little bit.
I'm not as worried about the industrial components because we can limit those, but the downstream impact of new corals really bothers me. So, I think that'd be an area of improving sewer systems, like lift stations and things like that could be upgraded to handle.
With like permanent generators or if they overflow during flood times, just excavating and rebuilding entirely, so.
So, what you're saying is, I mean, this is a moving target for us as well. Whatever we propose might be something that they'll say yes to if there's an overwhelming response from other communities doing this, you know?
You need that risk element. So, like, if you were going to, like, if you're, when it floods, when it rains, or when it really floods, if your sewer system is blasting out the wastewater plant with overflow, then you've got lots of INI infiltration and inflow into your sewer system, and it needs to be rehabilitated.
Well, I don't think we have redundancy either in some areas. So, I mean, this would help with redundancy, don't you think?
But you're going to end up with a major lift station right by that lake.
The master lift station down there.
And that should, that should have a generator if it doesn't already have one because, and it should be, you know, at least a three-pump station, triplex station.
We're also looking at some stormwater that we've got to set up as well with that.
Yes, stormwater, flood control, yes.
Corbett, is it limited to one project per grant? Or you can combine several projects into one application?
Everything at this point is on the table.
And this isn't a loan, this is a grant.
As long as they say no.
This is a 100% funded grant.
It is.
Yeah.
It is. There is no matching requirement.
Okay. Any other questions?
Corbett, on the, on the other grant that we have in process, the advertising that we have says that the applications cannot be given out until the day after orientation. Can we change that? Or is that the way it has?
Yes, we could change that.
Okay.
So, as soon as it hits the paper, we can make the application available.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any further questions for Corbett? Seeing none, moving on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, Church Services Center proposed building.
I had requested this be on the agenda because it was, I understand that there was a construction pending for a structure that was 50 by 50. And the contract that we have with the city says 30 by 30. So, that right there wasn't compatible. Aside from, there hasn't been a long-term, or better yet, even a short-term plan on how we're going to, because the contract's only from year to year.
Yeah, it's another thing. I consider if you're going to put that much money into it, are you okay if they suddenly say, well, it's for something else? Well, I mean, that's what you've agreed to.
Yeah. I just want to back up a little bit. I know that when we originally started the contract, I'm sorry.
My name is Tom Fineran, and I'm the current executive director.
Okay.
John Jeffo was the former, and he's in the audience right now.
Okay, because you didn't look like, like Mr. Hayes, so.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Hayes.
He's over there too, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, originally when this contract was written, it was with the assumption that you guys had nowhere to be servicing the needy. And someone was doing it out of their garage or somewhere else like that. So, we were looking for a quick place to get you somewhere, which is why that contract was for year-to-year, because it was at the time, the city was looking at a location to relocate its streets department stuff that currently is on North Central Avenue, and it's a mess. And to turn that area into a small little pocket park or some, something, just leave it passive, but not to have it there and instead bring it over here to the city property only because there's already a big, huge concrete pad. It's easily accessible. It's just, everything is there. So, I felt I wanted to discuss this because if this is a year-to-year contract and you all put this big investment in there, then you would be probably tearing it down and relocating it. So, I was going to check with the council and see if it was amenable to you guys that, okay, we got a certain amount of money for the old police building where you previously were in. We haven't spent those funds yet, and I think it's $98,000. I would like to see that the council consider that we paved the parking with that money across the street from there, which right now was the old park. If you guys have $40,000 that you were going to build this building on, then you can use that in tandem with the existing sum of the money that we have left over from the hurricane and the parking, and see if we can work something out that way. I would encourage, rather than us going to bid and building the building and doing what we want, let them do what they need on that property and just give them that property. It's what it's always going to be, you know? And if we use what we have, which by the way is C4 and needs to be rezoned, then I don't, I just think it's a win-win. I think it's a service that you provide to the community that we're not providing. And if it's the only place in town to do that, you're still centrally located, but you would still have that building. So, whether it can be rehabbed or whether it can be somehow converted into something that looks attractive from Main Street and fits our minimum maintenance guidelines and color scheme and all that. It's just a discussion point. Where it goes from here is up to you guys, but I just think that, that building that they're currently in, that before you spend another dime on it, that, you know, we keep it for our city use because that is important for us to have. And we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't use it for the bigger need, which is for all of our residents. So, I think it's a good compromise.
And in reality, that was the, I thought that was the original plan.
Yeah, but it came down to who's going to pay for the building to get it fixed and all this stuff. And here we are going out and getting estimates, and can we rebuild? Why would we build something that may not be usable by the organization that needs it? So, if they had input on how that building is going to get constructed, have at it, you know?
Okay. So, if I can just kind of back us up just a little bit, if you don't mind. First of all, I want to say thank you for, for having us here because this was important. Because I know you've talked about Church Service Center a couple of times, as I read in the newspaper, and I think it was due time that we had a chance to come in and speak our side of the facts as we see them. We have been, we were, as you know, in the historical building. The roof fell in, Irma. We actually moved to a shed the size of a lawnmower. I'm not sure if any of you have driven down South Butler and saw the shed that we were working out of for a couple of years. You did, I think, I heard that John said that you did. All of our volunteers were working out of there without air conditioning. They had a lot of fans, without a bathroom. We had a porti, 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 how do you call it? Porta, porta, yeah, that. And it was, it was real tough going, but we were waiting because the city said that they were going to do something with that money to repair or do something else with the money that they had. Meantime, as two years passed just recently, the city had promised us a five-year lease. With Mr. Flowers, we had it all ready, signed, ready to go. And just as the last minute, as we were moving in with that five-year lease for the old Yana Building where we are now at 104 South Railroad Ave, then we were told shortly thereafter that the five-year lease was no longer existent, and now we had a one-year lease with a 30-day notice. Our plans, because we went and spent a lot of money remodeling that, were for a five-year lease, as Mr. Flowers promised us.
Let me just stop you and say that Mr. Flowers doesn't have the authority to promise something like that.
Okay, but he did, sir. I mean, whether he had that authority or not, he promised us that.
That's a moral issue. I'm just addressing the legal issue.
He had the lease already signed and ready to go, and we just had to get it through.
He definitely doesn't have the authority to do a lease.
He didn't have the authority, and I know that now. And that's why obviously we don't have that lease any longer. And we have a one-year now. It's a big change in our mindset, because our mindset.
And you know, I will interrupt there. During our meeting, when we made it a one-year, it was specific that it had to be approved by you guys.
Really? And see, we never heard that.
Yeah, I hope that you would review those minutes or at least the video. I know that I made the comment at some point that, you know, or even Jerry may have said it as well, that you guys needed to, you know, what changes we were making had to be reviewed by you.
Sure.
We weren't doing it unilaterally. It had to be mutual.
We never heard that part of it. All we read is what was in the newspaper. That's the most that we heard of anything that went on during the council meeting. We were still working under the understanding we had the five-year lease until we contacted Mr. Flowers, and he said, ah, you know, I'm leaving. You're going to have to go to the new whatever. And we said, okay. And then that's when we heard that we had a one-year lease with a 30-day notice. Now, all of a sudden, the money that we had already put into the building remodeling, and if any of you, and I welcome any of you to come by, it looks really nice inside. We were planning on putting walk-in freezers and refrigerators because it was really going to benefit us, receiving almost 7,000 pounds sometimes a week from USDA and having a place to put it. And so, we had our investment already planned and allocated for those kind of, that kind of equipment as well as the building. Building, by the way, is not 40,000 or 50,000. It was a 27 by 27 it ended up being. It started as a 30 by 30. We adjusted it to 27 by 27, and it was $10,000. So, we don't have the $40,000 to extend, but we do have 10,000.
The permit with the county says 50 by 50.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not sure how that got 50 by 50, but ours, originally our plans said 30 by 30, and then we, we were required to adjust at three feet because if it was 30 by 30, then we would have to do something else for a permit and to get it passed through. So, we adjusted it to the 27 by 27. But we had the whole plan for about $10,000, and we did actually put a deposit, and I'm not sure we can get that deposit back at this time. Yes, sir?
Well, I have a question. You're talking about it was a five-year lease and it just got thrown in your lap as a one-year lease?
Yes, sir.
You had two people sign this agreement from a church service center.
They may have signed it before we got it, though, Stanley. You know, that happens a lot. People sign, I don't know if you guys had already signed it before it came to council, so that may have been that case.
Well, they couldn't have possibly signed it without having the whole lease, though. I mean, it would have had to be the final lease before they signed it. I can't.
I'm just giving the benefit of the doubt. I don't know when you did it.
Please, thank you for that because we knew nothing about it. And we were proposed at that time, this is your lease, take it or leave it. You have a one-year, 30-day notice, and we didn't have an option. We were already moved into the building, sir.
You had moved into the building before the lease was signed.
Yes, ma'am.
You had already made improvements to the building before the lease was signed, and that was improper to have given you the keys.
I think someone, I'm going to be honest with you now, how I feel about this.
Right.
I think someone in your, in your organization hooked in with Mr. Flowers, and he told them that the city was fixing to move their water department up there, and that expedited this whole thing. That's my personal feelings on that.
Well, I'm not sure about your personal feelings, sir.
And I'm going to go ahead and tell you right now, that is a piece of commercial property that I will never go for more than one year. I'll never vote for anything different than that.
And I want to tell you right now, sir, that we all work for God first, number one. Number two, I'm going to say this, that we are all working for the citizens and the constituents of Avon Park. In the same that you are serving them as the city council members, we are serving. We're all on the same team. So, we want whatever best for Avon Park and the citizens of Avon Park.
I'm just telling you where I'm at.
Yes, sir. And that's where we're at, too. And I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't hear of any other person saying something about what you're talking about, sir. And so, I hear what you're saying, but this is the first I ever heard about that.
Okay, that's fine.
So, ma'am, if I may, we had $10,000 put aside for that building. And by this time, what we, when I see Church Service Center proposed building up here, we are no longer proposing that. We can't afford that because it's going to be a loss for us. Right now, under the tentative situation that we have with a one-year, with a 30-day notice, we can't, we can't invest in any refrigerators or freezers. We can't invest in the building. We can't invest in anything else above and beyond what we have right now because we may be kicked out of there within 30 days.
Well, that's part of the problem with having a year-to-year, and that was probably, I'm the one that brought up the year-to-year. And it was specifically because there was a need for our utili, I'm sorry, our streets department to have a location. I mean, they're building an office over at Public Works. They're running out of space. There's all this stuff. And it's like, you know, and the one we have is just atrocious.
It was just never meant to be a long-term.
Yeah, it never was, and I didn't want you guys to get trapped into something to where, oh, my gosh, we're gonna have to tear this down after we just built it. And the, the year is halfway through already.
But when Mr. Flowers tells us it's a five years, you can understand the situation.
I totally get that, so you know that lack of communication.
And the lease is probably still around somewhere for five years.
In the end, it's on us. It's not on you on that sense. Because if that's what he was promised and that's what he was get, you know, but, but still going back on that, would you all look at Plan B? Would, you know, the other building?
Whatever, and you, like I said in, in a little while ago, as I said, that we're all on the same team.
Before more investment is done.
Well, we wanna serve Avon Park. Whatever's best for Avon Park, that's what we want. We're on your side. And I know you are all on our side, so whatever we can do to take care of the Avon Park residents, that's what we wanna do. Because we do that every day of the week. There's like twenty-five volunteers. And we serviced ten thousand people in Avon Park last year in our statistics that we, we have.
So I have a question for Mr. Hayes, that you have to come up here because there's a microphone. I'm presuming that he's your builder.
He, actually, you know what happened is that not only was he willing to do the plans, but he was also volunteering to put our building up for free.
But from the building perspective, he's got a lot of experience on that, and I spoke to him last week.
This is Mr. Hayes with Orange Wood Builders?
He's the, the one that was gonna donate his time to build this twenty-seven by twenty-seven. So have you had an opportunity to go into the building?
Yes.
Which building?
Uh, the old police building.
Yeah.
Yes, it's unreparable.
Okay, so.
It's full of black mold, and it's gonna take some very special technique to get rid of that building.
So let me ask you a question. While you, no, go ahead. While you're here, that, the, the old, the police building, the old police building we're talking about is not repairable, is that's what you're saying?
That's correct.
So it's best to tear it down and start all over?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, let me ask you all this question. Would you be willing to do that?
If given the funding and the land?
If we had funds to help you all with that?
With no term on a lease?
No. We just give it to you.
We would definitely be willing to, whatever that we could financially afford. We don't, yes, excuse me. We don't, we just don't have a lot. We're a nonprofit organization. We had ninety-eight thousand last year donated to us, and our, the bottom line, when we were done, two thousand nineteen, we had one thousand dollars left out of that ninety-eight thousand. We don't have the money to invest at this time. Hopefully, in the future, we will as we get more and more donations. But right now, we are totally at your mercy. And what that means is that we are, first of all, so thankful to God, and secondly, we're so thankful to you all because you deeded us that place for one dollar. And we are certainly grateful and thankful for each of you, you know, doing that for us. So if we can have this, this place that we're in, it sure is better than the shed with the lawnmower that, with about the size of a lawnmower shed that we were in before. Whatever we have after that is certainly, we're willing to collaborate and to talk about it and try to settle on, on a good, good idea and a good place that all of us can afford for the citizens of Avon Park.
What is the twenty-seven by twenty-seven gonna cost your association?
That was gonna cost ten, about ten thousand, a little less than ten thousand.
So they're, okay.
Well, why, why would you not take the old fire department property? Go behind that building where there's ample room to put a fifty by fifty and put it there, tear the building down at your convenience. We're gonna pave the parking lot in front.
Well, we don't have the money to tear the building down, sir.
Well, that's where I was getting at. This, this hurricane money that we got is ninety-eight thousand. And I don't know that we can afford to give ninety-eight thousand dollars. I'd like to pave the property across the street that we talked about before, okay? That clears that, that money would be taken out of that, and whatever's left, let them have it. But if we let them have it, there has to be a caveat again, that the building, you know, you guys do the bid, you do the design, you do what you want that's compatible with our LDR, because I don't wanna get involved with specifications and hiring and going through the bid process of three different people, because they're gonna have change orders galore wanting it the way they want it. They know what they need. Let them have it.
I'm for that, too. I'm for that.
From the very beginning, that was my suggestion. Tear that building down, build a new building right on top of it. Pave the property, the old skate park. Done.
So could you all work with that?
We definitely could work with that.
And just don't bother us anymore and be done with it?
No, because in, in reality, sir.
I can't promise that.
I say that in a nice way.
Wait a minute, I can't promise that. Okay, but yes, yes, ma'am.
In reality, and, and my thought is that I kind of feel like the, the property that you're in now, we do need that property.
Yes, I understand that, right.
We need that.
Right.
And to have you all there more than a, a year or two would be shooting ourselves in the foot, so.
And it's zoned where you can do, I think your footprint can go to property line to property line. It doesn't have to have huge setbacks and stuff, so that allows you more space. You will be on the hook for your own power and water and all of that. And my only request would be that if we do donate this property, that you don't turn around and sell it.
Right, of course.
That it would be, you know, yeah, that would have to be a reverted clause, right.
Right, and beyond that, you don't have to do a giveaway. You can just simply do a fifty-year lease or something very long-term.
Something, but I, I like.
And then that way, if there's parking there, it can still be public parking when not in use by them.
The parking across the street is C four, so it's public.
Sure, sure, yeah.
So, you know, anyone would be able to park there.
We're willing to, to work with you all and whatever we can do to, to make this the easiest and best for the citizens of Avon Park.
I think the easiest way to go.
Just, just bearing in mind that this is just.
What John is saying here in the back of me is that what we need right now for short-term is that, that shed, because we need storage for our dry foods that we have, and that shed that's in back of the historical building, it was the shed that we were in for two years. We would like it, and as a matter of fact, Rick has volunteered to.
Behind you.
Rick had volunteered to, to help us move that from in back of the historical building to the parking lot. That's something that wouldn't cost us anything. That's something that we're not gonna invest in, something that we could easily get rid of.
You're talking putting it back?
Just taking the shed from in back of the historical building. And if it's, if you just look right across the railroad tracks is where the Yana Building is.
And putting it where you are right now?
That's right, so we can.
And then you'd be undoing it again?
Well, just, it's the shed that was there.
Oh, it's a shed. It's not a construction. So you're gonna load it up and just like move it?
There you go, on, on a forklift, and, and we're gonna put it over there in the parking lot. And then we'll have access to our dry goods right outside the building so we can bring them in and out as needed for the constituents.
I don't have a problem with that because it's not a, it's not a fixed structure.
Yeah.
I think we originally purchased that when we started the building sound that, fire station.
The only thing I would just request is that once you get that, if this is what the council ends up deciding and we go the way we just finally discussed, is that you need to make sure that it's compliant with our LDR. You just can't really nearly stick a shed anywhere.
Okay, sure.
And it has to be compatible with whatever the construction design is, but, you know, I just don't know that that's gonna be enough money, but I would hope that if you do something construction-wise there, that it be compatible with the historic nature of what was there before. I mean, I know it was dilapidated and everything, but just a regular barn-looking building will not be compatible with our downtown. Maybe you could put some decorative something on it to make it look nice.
Well, we're just gonna move the shed, you know, it's just that like a lawnmower shed.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, the building itself.
In the future, you mean.
We're a long ways away from that right now.
I am, I know, but I'm just saying, when you start doing designs, people like to go and just do, do everything on the inside and not make it pretty on the outside. And then, you know, the rest of us have to look at that. We'd like, I'd like it to look nice.
I would like for us to collaborate every step of the way, and that way, you guys will be happy and then we will also. And I think that's the way to do it since we're all working for the same end result.
Perhaps you might want to designate somebody to coordinate with them and start discussing this?
I would be more than happy to do that.
It's Mr. Schrader.
Okay, good. And just bearing in mind, sir, that this is just discussion and no promises were made here.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Those, those get written down in the contracts.
I realize that now, thank you, yeah.
But in the meantime, I would not be building a twenty-seven by twenty-seven on your current location.
We're taking that right off of the agenda and it's no longer proposed, and we're just, if it's okay. So if it's okay with you, then we can just move that lawnmower shed over to this parking lot for now.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Should we vote on that, or is that something that we can just do?
No, you can, you can do that. That's up to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, you're in favor. And by the way, Mr. Hayes is a great advocate for you guys.
There's no promise that, that shed's gonna make the trip. It's twenty years old. It can be full of termites and.
So it may not make the trip.
If, we're gonna do our best to, if you see, that's, I say that that's okay, but there's no promise that it'll be in one piece.
So what will happen if it don't make the trip?
We'll just have to polish it all.
Pick up the pieces.
Well, then we have to find another place for our, our canned goods and, and dry goods.
The lawnmower shed.
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll buy another shed, right, exactly.
Was that ten thousand dollar building? Was that a metal building?
Yes, sir. It was, yeah, yeah.
Okay, very good. Anything else on this?
Sure was nice meeting you all. Thank you so much for hearing us and I'm sorry for all the confusion. Yeah, I, I, John said, and I know I have asked this, I know I've said this to Kim, you know, individually, if you could. I know that having served ten thousand people last year, and as a matter of fact, we're getting three to seven new people signing up every single day there with our new building. If, if you all could just stop by sometime and say hi and let us take you for a tour.
Let me ask you, are these Avon Park residents that are signing up every day?
Avon Park residents.
Are they moving here because of your services, or is this, I'm just asking, I'm just asking?
Yeah, what's happening right now is that we opened it up. We can't, according to USDA regulations, we can no longer ask for verification of identification, meaning before we were doing social security cards. And now, so what that means is now opening up to anyone with or without a social security card.
So are, is it going to become a regional hub?
It's, no, it's not gonna become a regional hub. It's, it's, right now, it's become an incredible resource for those people that were hidden before in Avon Park and now, now have a place to go as a resource for food and clothing. And funds, funds, because we also, what we do is we assist with electric bills, we assist with water bills, we assist with the rent bills, we assist with pharmacy, with gas. And I think that John told me just the other night, what was it, yesterday, Advent Hospital? Called him up and said, we have a, a woman and her son living in their car in the parking lot here at Advent Hospital. Is there anything that Church Service Center can do? And John said, as a matter of fact, we can. We're gonna put them up in the Oaks Tree Inn. And we put them up there in the hotel so they can get clean and get bathed. And, and that's a regular occurrence for us, and people getting their lights shut off and their, their water shut off and.
The police are calling in the middle of the night. I can't get any sleep.
Yeah, that's right. As you can tell, he's not getting much sleep. The police are calling in the middle of the night, he said. And waking them up to, to help the people of Avon Park.
We appreciate everything you do.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank God, yeah, not us. We're just the messengers. God bless you all.
Thank you.
God bless you. All right, moving on to item number six, Ridge Area Arc Lamp Post Scarfs. Donna, I believe that's you. If you could give your.
Hi, everybody. Kathleen Border, CEO, Ridge Area Arc.
If you give your, okay, nevermind, that's good.
Forty-three fifty-two Independent Street, Avon Park. Is that what you needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we are here to request that we are able to tie scarves around the lamp posts again as an advocacy event. For those of you who don't know what we do, we care for people sixteen to end-of-life with developmental disabilities. We have a large population of seniors who came to us actually from institutions in the state. And when the state dissolved institutions at approximately the same time, there was an Avon Park family, the Ward's, who started Ridge Area Arc. And so that's how we began. Still thirty-seven states in the United States that have institutions. Super happy to say Florida is not one of them. So for us, the scarf is not just a scarf. It's really just a commitment from the community to continue to serve individuals with developmental disabilities in a community setting, in their homes, in group homes, the way that they wanna be served, so. That's what we would like to do. It's an outreach event. We had the scarves up last year for about a week. The scars have a tag that says, please take the scarf with you. And when you do, you're committing to advocate for people with developmental disabilities. So there were no scarves left after about a week. It was quite, quite fun. We had a lot of social media awareness stuff that happened. So we're asking that we do that again sometime in March. We'd like to do it for about a week. And we'll defer to you guys if you have a week that you would like us to do that, certain week.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I thought it was very cool of you guys to do that, very imaginary. And I think it'd be another great year of success.
Thank you. Try to be unique and different.
Does anyone have a particular week that they would suggest, or?
I'd leave it up to them. I mean, we have some events coming up if you wanted to do it during one of those events that has a lot of, you know, attention downtown.
Okay.
The Blueberry Festival would be one. Annie's here. She has a four-day event.
Yep.
So.
She has awesome events. There's a lot of great people doing some great things here.
I'd say just get together with city staff and see which ones are the busiest weeks and go from there.
Okay.
Very good. Do we need a motion for this? Jerry?
Please?
We entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Ridge Area ARC Lamp Post Scarf Project at the, at the weak discretion of their choosing.
I'll be happy to second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to now take up the budget adjustment from the CRA meeting. This is a budget adjustment put forth by Ms. Phillips, who's now gonna explain it to us.
It's the three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars that was approved to donate towards the stage for Vet Jam. To move it out of contingency into the donation fund.
Okay, was there a question? This is the budget adjustment from the CRA meeting.
I'm looking around. That's not in my book.
No, that was handed in.
It's in the CRA.
Oh, yeah, 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 I remember, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the budget adjustment from, where, where's it going from?
Contingency to.
From contingency to the donation fund.
Yeah, there, that.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous.
Thank you. Item number seven, discussion of illegal street vending and remedies. Ms. Sutherland?
Yeah, you know, I noticed also on the council agenda that a lot of those things are like mine, but a lot of these can, if you just, a lot of times people complain to me and I was just looking for updates, but I wanted them to be kind of on the forefront because they seem to be recurring issues. But getting to the street vending thing, the night after our last council meeting, I went out to dinner and on my way back, there was street vending going on right here in the council parking lot. Big old truck with big old lights, big old trailer, racks and racks of clothing. They had a stand full of, yep, right behind over here. And so I called Kim. It was what, ten o'clock at night, nine-thirty at night? And I believe she called law enforcement and they went out and did whatever they did. But this goes back on the council meeting before that. We had a resident come up complaining about the exact same thing in her neighborhood on De Soto. So I've spoken to several people since then because I read the agenda in the newspaper and they're like, you know, they come to my neighborhood, someone else called and said they were in my front yard. I mean, this seems to be a very prevalent issue. It's black market goods at ten o'clock at night. It's unfair to those people. I'd love for this, this business to rent something on Main Street. Let them pay their fire assessment and rent like everybody else does. But in the meantime, I know code enforcement can't get, we're not gonna drag you out of bed at ten o'clock at night to come, you know, do this. So if the sheriff is okay doing it, that's fine, but, you know, what, what's a remedy? We don't have any, we don't have a way to do anything with them because we don't have, no one complains because they think it's okay, and it just continuously happens. From what I've been told, this happens about three times a, a week inside our city limits.
Other than making the public aware that it's not legal, what other remedy is there?
Well, I don't know what, if code enforcement did do something, I mean, would we be able to, who do we call? I mean, is, the sheriff isn't gonna be able to, what are they gonna do? Give him a fine? They don't, they're not code enforcement.
Sergeant Aaron told me that if we hear about it from anywhere, from anyone in the county, to please let him know, so.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
I asked Captain McGann, make sure he's here tonight, because I think some of this is law enforcement. And I've got a better representative than Major Darren Hood, his boss, and I briefed him on it. If you'd like to talk to him, because you sent me a couple of things today that were code, but they're also law enforcement. So I guess maybe that's because of my past profession. I know when I see something as law enforcement, I'm gonna pass it on. But if, if the major would like to come up and discuss it, because, I mean, if they're black market goods, if, if maybe they've got some intel on who's doing this, or maybe it's just come to their attention. We dealt with this years ago at Sheriff's Office with people coming from out of the county selling meat all over the county illegally.
Yeah, and these are from out of county.
And we finally put a stop to that, so I'll turn it over to the very capable major.
Major Darren Hood from Hines County Sheriff's Office for the record. This, first, I'm, I'm hearing about it personally. I'm not saying that others at our agency have not heard about it. But I will work with City Manager Schrader. We'll let us research the applicable statutes that we can enforce, work with code enforcement, and we'll look for some type of remedies on this. I'm not, I don't have an answer for you right now because I haven't had the time to, you know, research applicable statutes and get with my staff. You know, I heard the mention of Sergeant Aaron, so let us do some research and we can try to get to a resolution on it.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hood.
Thank you.
We, we do have a sign-up. Dean Underwood? Please give your name and address for the record there.
Yes, Gary Underwood. Address is four twenty-five Joe Hilton Street, Avon Park.
Thank you, sir.
Wanted to thank the council for giving me a couple of minutes to speak. And I'd like to begin by saying I am a proud Vietnam veteran, disabled veteran, and now the proud co-owner of a street vendor, a food vendor. And when I, when I saw in social media that this was on the, on the agenda, Councilmember Sutherland, I want to thank you for that. I was impressed that you were taking this up. I don't know about the remedies, but I know what we went through to become completely legal. We spent many weeks due diligence researching, coming to City Hall a couple of times, calling the county, the state, Department of Agriculture, acquiring all the permits, the articles of organization for our LLC, hotel and restaurant compliance, the many pages of NF, National Fire Provincial Association, NFPA requirements for fire extinguishing, fire suppression, and being in compliance with that. The, the food train, the food handling certification. And by the way, we don't sell clothes, but this is a food vendor, right? Food handling training certification. We had to go through that and get that certified. We had to learn all the mobile food requirements for safety and food handling. There's a potable water to wastewater ratio that has to be in compliance. The water temperature has to be at a certain temperature. We have to make sure that that complies. We have to make sure that that complies. We have to have multiple sink compartments for hand washing gloves. And by the way, if health inspectors step on the trailer, we ask them for ID, and would they please wash their hands and glove? Because we're serious about food handling. I'm ex-law enforcement and military, so we want to be a hundred percent in compliance in our community. So, I mean, there's many other things we had to do. We had to research city, I mean, local and state tax permits and registrations, federal, EIN. So, we were, we're completely in compliance with taxes. And we also had to learn food handling codes. Now, my co-partner has twenty-five-something years of food handling experience and management experience. So, everything's going to be labeled with dates and times that you can hold it, cold holding, hot holding. And so, anyway, a- as far as a remedy goes, I would encourage the, the city and law enforcement to com- to compile a list of the things that I just mentioned, and I'm leaving some out. But there's several thousand dollars' worth of permits and equipment that's required to legally operate and to safely operate a street vendor or, in our case, a food handling, a mobile food concession operation. So, the food and fire safety is of supreme importance to our citizens, and so we want to make sure that the folks that, that attend events, that might visit our mobile food concession, going to be, going to be, you know, safe and, uh, and is going to be all the compliance that's necessary. I don't know how to address clothing sales. That is, seems like more of a law enforcement issue with black market items.
It's, it's, it's important that you're, that you're meeting all those requirements and so on, of the state agencies and so on, but you, but you still have to meet the requirements of the city as well. Having to do land development codes and things like that. I'm familiar with what you have to do. I, I taught hospitality law at a culinary institute. So, I mean, I understand what you had to do there, but that's separate and apart from...
Yeah.
Land development, and I, and the city has to be concerned about bricks-and-mortar restaurants because you compete with them unfairly.
Yeah, but he's not setting up shop at nine o'clock at night.
That's right.
No, he's doing it during events. He's doing it on sanctioned events and things like that. He's explaining what he does with his...
Then you just like that Jam 2020.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but if it's not meeting the land development code, you need to establish regulations.
Correct.
We just did that in Bowling Green, and land, and Central Florida Regional Planning Council has a model for that that they can discuss with you and do that. And I, I highly encourage that you, you establish regulations associated with these uses and allow them under those regulations. Because, I mean, that, I mean, some of the food trucks are spectacular, you know, that... And so, I, I just simply say, you know, you, you have to allow some, some regulation.
Yeah, you're not asking to come do business at ten o'clock at, at night on city property or anything. I mean, I'm not, I'm not worried about Mr. Underwood. I think that what he does is fine when he does it with his events. He already knows his, his business model. You know, we're predominantly talking about the illegal black market use of, of city property and sometimes even private property. It's not an authorized... They don't have a, an occupational license. You don't need an occupational license for what you do.
Well, we do.
But, I mean, when you're doing it at an event.
Well, we have to provide, provide an application...
To her.
General liability...
Yeah.
To the event coordinator like, like Annie.
Yeah, but not to the city. Then that might be something we can look at later on.
That's separate and apart.
Yeah.
But, but, um, any vendors that are selling on city property are immediately violating the law. But the, um, they're violating the land development code if they're, if they're doing it on your, your resident, on your residential properties. Okay?
I would just say education would be a paramount. One of the things that I had to, we had to research a lot of different websites and go to various offices, but a newspaper article about illegal street vending, I think would, would be helpful and just to ensure that folks that are going to operate in the city are going to operate legally and ethically and safely.
Yes, thank you.
Want to encourage you to come to Vet Jam 2020, support our veterans.
What's the name of your food truck?
Bebe's Food for the Soul.
Okay.
What is it?
Bebe's Food for the Soul.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have the Sheriff's Department looking into it. Obviously, they will come back to us with some possible solutions. Once we figure out what we'd like to do about it, we can make that as public as possible, let these people know that if they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, that they will be caught and prosecuted if need be. And I'm sure that will take care of the problem.
I think it'd be a, a good situation under our new, um, code provisions for citations that we're working with the Sheriff's Office with, so...
So, you're saying that the sheriff could do citations and impose fines on behalf of the city, right?
Yeah. But under the new, I don't know how, where they are, whether they've already issued that new template for the citations or not, but I don't see why not.
He comes to clarify something.
The, the new codes, the citations have been pushed out. There's still some education going on within, or training going on within the agency on that. But I do want to clarify that we're only planning on, our intentions are only to enforce the nuisance-type violations.
But this is a nuisance.
This could be, I'm not talking, I just, you know, we're, we're not getting into what your code enforcement staff does on a regular basis, dealing with some of the, you know, land regulations and that type of stuff. We're only planning on doing the noise, you know, a lot of the noise and nuisance violations is what our intentions are.
And some of these things, you, you guys are going to need to have an on-call person at code enforcement.
At some point.
At some point.
Because we can't keep calling the sheriff every time there's an illegal vendor on Main Street.
Plus, they're not experienced with our code with regard to that area, and the code enforcement should be.
And there will be some codes that we can report that we will not get in the middle of issuing a citation to, but we can report that to your code enforcement, and they can go back and issue a delayed citation or whether, whatever their process may be.
All right, thank you. Very good. Thank you, Major Hood. Anything else on this issue? Seeing none, moving on to item number eight, demolition costs for existing code enforcement case at three-twenty-two. How McGray?
Yeah, the gentleman that owns this property has a brother, and the brother had contacted me a few times in wanting to know if the council would be willing to postpone the demo because they wanted to do something with the building. And we can't postpone the demo. It's, it's a hazard. And so, and I don't think, he lives out of town, the Panhandle, the brother that owns the house is here, and, I mean, maybe Marnita can give more fill-in on that. But I understand that there wasn't sufficient money in the code enforcement budget to demo this property and haul away all the stuff on it.
Yes, we do have enough.
You do have enough?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Perhaps the church service...
Then get it done.
Yeah.
Perhaps the church service center that was just here, maybe make sure that he's got a place to live.
He does. The guy's been living outside of wherever this, this... We're going to end up with property there.
It's been abandoned. He hasn't been living there.
Got you, okay.
But, I mean, I just wanted to make it clear. I mean, in talking to the brother, you know, hopefully trying to maybe do something with the property if he could apply for a CDVG grant, or maybe get a house built on it or something like that. But I didn't see any traction from there, and, and it's, it's not my purview to be telling this individual how to do and go about and all that stuff. I can only take them so far, but it's really the property owner that needs to be doing the, the legwork for that. So, as good as his brother was intending to help out, it just wasn't working. And I just wanted to say, you know, I know that this has been a problem now for eons. And then you did take it to the magistrate. So, the phone calls that I've been getting, and I'm sure you're getting the same ones, are, when is it going to be demoed?
Right now, we're, we've, um, Tyrus has been working on it. He does all the demolitions for us, so we're waiting on... He has, I can't remember which companies, but we're waiting on quotes from the companies to...
But, I mean, we're good to go? Did the magistrate say you're good to go with that?
Yes, the magistrate did the order. It should be in your pack, packet when he... February twelfth. And the building official has already went out and deemed it, that it needs to be demolished.
Okay.
So, we're, right now, we're just waiting on quotes to demolish it.
Okay, so, okay.
Have you all requested them?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they sealed bids?
Are they sealed?
Are they sealed?
Actually, no, they just come back to us on, through email.
Because they're requests for proposals. They should be sealed and all opened at the same time.
Since I've been here, so, but thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure in the future, any work that needs to be done for the city needs to be put out on the website for a certain period of time. They come back sealed and then...
Well, I don't know what the cost is. I thought it was going to be less, uh, more than ten thousand. So, I know that there's a threshold for the city manager on what you can spend, but it has to be sealed envelopes if it's in excess of ten thousand dollars.
So far, it looks like it's going to come in under that.
Okay, so, but they still have to be sealed? Not advertised. You can pick up the phone and call, and then they give you a, they send you the documentation. But otherwise, there's no guarantee that, you know, company A calls in and say, "What's company B going to charge?" And I'm going to come in under that.
No, no one does that. They don't call us and ask what the other company's...
The day will come that they do. And it's a public record.
Okay, I understand that.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
No problem.
But in terms of the policy, I think that, you know, I know that we've been really strong on trying to keep the procurement policy active, and, um, that's all. And anyway, I was under the assumption it was more than ten.
Let me ask one other question, Miss English. You say you're waiting on the bids. Give me, could you know an approximate, approximate date when this will, you will get these figures?
No, ma'am.
Well, we don't want to make...
I mean, I know it's, we're not going to wait a long time.
I mean, it's, it's, because I've been working with this for three years now, at least.
Oh, okay.
At least three years.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I've only been on it since March.
I know, that's why.
Code enforcement officer, Tyrus got through. Right now, we have two bids. We just contacted the last one as of today, so they be, should be getting with us Friday. That'll make three bids. So, soon we get that third one, we'll go up to the office and we'll sit down and we'll get one.
All right, I want you to wait another month waiting on that third bid.
We, we, we're going to...
No, they know that this is really important.
And you might, might want to take into consideration along with the amount, whether they can start, you know, right away, as she's saying, or is it going to be six months before they can engage?
Yeah, when, uh, explaining it to them, when I explained them to them about what's happening with this property and what's going on, I let them know that this is a priority, and if they don't have time, let us know. And if they do have time, because we're trying to get this, uh, this situation resolved.
Thank you. So, just one question. Do we know whether the building has lead or asbestos? And shouldn't that be part of something when they're going to remove it? And, you know, there's nothing, as far as I know, in the bid that specifies that the, how they're going to dispose of that. I mean, I'm not trying to be too nitpicky.
Are they inspecting the building before they give a bid?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that, that's their responsibility to determine that.
Yeah, yeah, they, they go out and inspect the whole property before they get, before they give us a bid.
So, it's all-inclusive price?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, and just make sure that they're con... We need to make sure that their contract has that in there, that that's their responsibility, not ours.
So, what you're saying is that they're going to need a contract? They just can't really, nearly go out there and do the work?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, okay. And they need to be insured and all that stuff?
Yeah, yeah, we have files of like their insurance, and they give us all that before they even bid.
We should have a contract that we do for this type of work.
Yes, sir.
Well, can you start a template contract if they don't have one? And that way, it's all ready to go rather than waiting another month for them to do that?
Why don't you, why don't you send me what you have, and then, uh, if, if that's okay, I'll work with that. Otherwise, I'll put one together.
Okay, all right.
All right, great, thanks.
Very good.
Thank you, Marnita.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tyrus, thank you.
All right, item number nine.
Wait, 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 I want to...
Yes, sir.
I want to piggyback, if I can, off code enforcement on this right here.
Okay.
We, we've kind of kicked it around among this council about a code enforcement slash building inspector. And I, I'd like to see if the city manager could maybe reach out to some cities around and see how they're handling that, what title that person has, and the salary range we're talking about. Because I'd like to see us maybe move in that direction.
I believe we established that in the last meeting, did we not?
I'm sorry?
We, I believe we asked the staff to do that at the last meeting.
I think you should hold open the alternative of having a contract, um, building inspector, and have a professional code enforcement officer, just in case it waters down expertise on one side or the other.
Yeah.
Have somebody that does both. Because if you have a contract person, they're going to do whatever you tell you. So, they tell you, if you tell them they need to work with our code enforcement manager, then they'll do that. I'll just throw that out there, it's a possibility.
Right.
Can I say something? I hear what you said. I've watched all the meetings after I put in, just to stay up, and I know that there's at least two or three of you that would like to move in that direction. I would ask if I could have a little time to see really what's going on in the whole organization before I make that decision. I'm certainly not against it, but I would, I would like just some time because you brought it, um... Jerry just brought up something. I mean, I need to look at our code right now. They do great jobs. We don't have anybody in there certified, which is a, you know, concern if they start writing things and defense attorney shows up for somebody. But I would like just some time to, to look at, to look at that before decisions are made which way to go and maybe go the wrong way. But I certainly understand, you know, why you want that, but I'm just asking for some time.
More than two weeks?
No, I think, you know, we had talked about this, Garrett's right, and it was about, because we're going to start working on budget, so he's going to have to figure out where it's going to fit in there, and we have until October.
And it's one of the things that I was going to talk to you about Thursday, is this issue.
So, take your time.
But not too much time.
There you go.
You want to get it right.
All right, item number nine, excavation point ink contract.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I understood Mr. Trevino to say that our, our contract with excavation point had expired. And in the documentation here, he said that he wanted to piggyback off of Sebring. And I want to say that Sebring piggybacked off of us way back when. So, I don't know that you have to contact them or if the, the fee schedule has changed. And if it has changed, do we need to go back out to bid for other contracts, contractors to be able to submit rather than just arbitrarily piggybacking?
Right.
Just saying. So...
The last time that we went out for bid was probably...
Two thousand and ten or something.
Yeah, so it's been a while.
It's been a long time.
So, obviously, we need something that protects us now if we have to get something done. So, we need something in the interim, but I think it would definitely be in order to go out for bid again.
Yeah.
Just so that we know what the updated prices are in today's market.
I agree with that.
So, I mean, I'd like to see us go back out to bid for this.
I would too.
Me too.
And if they come in higher than what the numbers are for Sebring, then we'll piggyback off of Sebring.
Do we need any type of motion for that? I think we have the direction.
They can go out for bid without us, yeah.
All right, item number ten.
But one other thing, I don't know that the contract is fully concise. Is, there's other things in there that need to be added as part of the services that they provide. Maybe they can be added in. I don't know that we've always used them for everything. I don't know that we've always used them for everything. If there's, do they do demo? You know, are we still gonna go look for private demos, you know?
They, they do. So, what I understand is they have pretty much something in there for everything relating to demolition, underground work, roadwork, and then we just use them as needed.
Okay, but it doesn't tie us to only use them. We could still use other people.
Right.
Right, okay.
This is just a negotiated set of pricing that we can always pick from.
So...
Anything else on item number nine? Seeing none, item number ten, intent to bid, landscape beautification of the mall.
Okay, so, we set aside sixty thousand dollars for the mall for beautification and a original when Mr., um, our previous infrastructure director was here. They had gone out to bid, and it was just for the exact same thing that our current staff is doing, which was mowing. So, we told them, no, we wanted something more with a green thumb approach.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you need a supervisor to, to do that? I mean, do you need a department head to tell your staff to do that? Or do we have to tell you to tell your staff? Cause I don't wanna be telling you what to do. But, I would've thought that by now, we would've had something, because it's been nearly three months since we said, "Please go to bid."
Robert and I will have the, um, intent to bid finished up this week, and we'll go out to bid for it.
Um, can we see it before you put it out to bid? Because that was a problem with the first one, is that we didn't have any input on beautification. Um, I, I know that many of us up here on council have been, our ears have been chewed off by local residents with what they'd like to see in there as well.
Would that, would that justify a workshop?
I don't know. I mean, if they could send us the bid information prior, and then we can take a look at it and throw our two cents in. I mean, I'd like for the public to have an input, if they wanna see some blooming orchids on the, on the mall. But, again, it's gonna require maintenance. And this plan, whatever is proposed, is gonna have to have a maintenance schedule in it as well. We're not good at maintaining if we don't know what we're maintaining. Some things get pruned, and they're not supposed to, et cetera. So, it's all of that included in there. So, I don't know if you're gonna need a landscape person that knows when to trim, when to mulch, when to do this, when to do that. I don't know. Do, do you know that? I mean, is that gonna be... So, I think there needs to be a little bit more input on there, if even a landscape person, that I know, we've had previous people in the past very interested in doing this for free. So, um...
Well, things like blooming and flowers and stuff like that, sounds to me like you need a, um, a professional gardener, some, somebody who's a master gardener.
Well, yeah, there's master gardeners. There's also two garden clubs that know how to do this, you know? They are women that have a lot of expertise and hundreds of years of experience of stuff that blooms and grows here, but also landscape people in town. So, I'm just saying that before you put together a bid package, that it reflect in there seasonal blooms, things of that nature, that, you know, make the mall more attractive. I mean, there's some things that we can do there right now with some trees, and it goes back to the irrigation. This will do no good if the irrigation's not working, so...
Robert has assured me that the irrigation is working on the entire mall, so I'll, you know...
But sidewalks inclusive. It also means the sidewalks. Some of those parts look pretty shabby. There's some dead trees on, on the side. Those east Palatka hollies only have like five leaves on them. They should just be removed. But, the irrigation on the sidewalk, I don't think is working, and if it is, it's not turned on.
Yeah. I mean, I think the big struggle here has been, we've been struggling with a basic level of maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Getting the bases covered. And of course, there's always an infinite amount of things that you can do. But, we haven't been able to do just the guaranteed, it's gonna get done every month, basics. So, I mean, that's kinda step number one. And obviously, Mr. Schrader, uh, is gonna have his work cut out for him as to how he wants to approach that, whether that's all contract or whether that's with employees. You know, it's up to you to kinda decide. But, we have to at least get the bases covered first and see how much more money we have to keep going after that.
Basic maintenance, right.
Yep.
But, not basic maintenance where we're hiring a company to do what we're already doing right now.
Right.
This is just the extra green thumb approach. It's not to, I mean, if that's the case, then, you know, we don't need someone else to mow the mall if that's another employee's job to do. But, you know, enhancement. I mean, this is our crown jewel.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got zero to a hundred. We've gotta find that happy medium there.
So, something that's maintainable, that if we don't have the money next year, that it can still be maintained.
Right. Anything else on that? Seeing none. Moving on to item number eleven, status of roof repair at Classic Kaladium Building.
I ran into the, um, to Dr. Hartman, who is the person holding the lease on the Classic Kaladium Building. And, um, to my dismay, since Irma, the roof still has not been repaired. And I wanna know when it's gonna get done, because we have a contract with them, and we are in default of that contract by not repairing that roof.
I know Robert, um, had sent this email that I put in here, said that he had just heard back from the, um, insurance company with what they, what they want, or what they're gonna pay for, actually.
Hate to say it, but this is really old news. This is just a repeat of stuff that we already know.
I believe at this point, we're still waiting on contractors to give bids.
It's been since Irma. And, you know, how long does it take to get someone out there to give us a bid? It, it's, you know, this place is leaking. Um, it could potentially damage more of the interior of this building that we will be responsible for. The only alternative that we have is to allow Ms., Dr. Hartman to go hire his own, and then we just pay the bill, and then we're done with it. And no one from the city would have to be involved with that. But, then we would be responsible for whatever that cost is gonna be.
That doesn't seem like a good idea.
No, it doesn't. But, but he is allowed to do that according to his contract.
Under what circumstances?
We haven't done our part, and we're in default.
According to whom? According to something established by a court or this arbitrary...
I prefer we not declare that, but move forward to get it fixed.
Well...
So, you'll ask for a status update from Robert, and I'm sure the new city manager can probably twist his arm a bit to try to get this done, right?
Or find someone else to do it.
Right.
Well, when I read this email, it says right here, it says, "Please forward any invoices, documents regarding completed repairs." Uh, so, I guess we have done.
No, we know we haven't.
I think we need to get the repairs done, invoices, then get the insurance claim.
Yeah, at the last, uh, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we heard from Robert, at that point, we only had one contractor. We had to have at least two and three preferred.
Yeah.
So, it's a matter of contacting those contractors and actually getting some numbers from them. It's a pretty all-encompassing job. It's not something that's just some simple, it's not just a roof, it's not just a wall. It's a, it's a big job.
So, it takes a major construction company that has all facets. I gotcha. Well, the roof was definitely an important one.
So, the city manager put that on the top of the top of the list to do?
The Everest list, yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else on item number eleven? Seeing none, item number twelve, uh, Jerry, is it being pulled?
Well, no, it's not being pulled so much as it is, it's for informational. I think we just, I just, I miscommunicated with the clerk on this. I, I, I want you all to have the information, uh, but not vote on it. We, we still need to meet, and this is one of the things that I need to talk with, um, the city, city manager about, um, you know, what we do this in parts or what we do it in total. But, there's a lot, as you can see here, a lot, awful lot of changes, and I think changes that I think are fairly critical. And so, maybe we attack the ones that are absolutely critical, critical first, and then go later on with the rest of them. But, I, I, I need, I need to meet with city staff to, to, in these, each of these areas, billing and utilities, uh, and so on, to find out what their opinions are on it. Because these are just my opinions based on other contracts I've done for other people. The hazardous waste section, I don't expect anybody to know about that. We can, I mean, that's something we can go ahead and schedule fairly soon. But, the engineers are ultimately gonna tell us what we can actually handle, and then we just modify it then. But, I think we should have something in place. And we really need to have public works pursue looking into existing contributors to our plant of industrial waste or, or, um, hazardous waste.
Which comes to the next question. Um, what is the status at this point? It, it appears that we need, um, a public works director, and is that already out?
No, that's one sitting on my desk with all the other priorities, but it's, it's on there, and, um, we're gonna work on getting that out. And a, actually, I, I want someone to look at an engineer or something, see what we're putting in there, cause I know the, the price we're paying before is maybe low for an engineer. But, it's, it's sitting there, yes, one of the things we need to do.
He wasn't the licensed engineer, by the way.
What's that?
He wasn't. Our previous one was not a licensed engineer, so it may be actually quite high.
Yeah.
So, um, he was a master's degree. He wasn't a P.E. I just think that we really need to move forward with that, because it seems that you, you know, you're not, you're gonna have your hands full managing individuals from a department that needs a su, that needs a, a director. You know, you need to surround yourself with people that, that can do that day-to-day stuff. Otherwise, your list is gonna be this much longer.
That's an understatement. I agree.
Right?
Like Roberts. Like Roberts.
Mm-hmm.
Everything, Robert will get it done. Robert will get it done. He can't do everything, you know?
No, he can't.
Okay.
But, that, that is one of the priorities.
Do you need anything from us on that? To help you accomplish that?
No, it, during the, ma, as I talked when it first came in, I wanna sit down with each of you individually. And obviously, what I said before, I'm, I told, uh, Mark with the paper, he got ahead of me and put out there and got your priorities anyways, which I, I had told him I was encouraged by. But, I, I would request that you sit down with me, and I want Kim in there too, because she's been your interim and done a great job. But, I, I think that, you know, just at this point, I'm seeing some things that don't need to be brought up now, because you're seeing things, I need to look further. But, I, I need to speak to you each individual, obviously, about the same stuff for, for when you make decisions on priorities. Cause, um, you know, you're on a council, but, and I'm new coming in, so I get to see things.
Okay.
We really need to sit down, and this week, all you, um, all you gotta do is call me or Kim, and we'll get you on, um, our calendar, um, day, night, whatever. I know some of you work during the day, but i, it's, it's very important you sit down and, and talk to me.
Very good.
Okay.
Anything else on item number twelve? Seeing none. City manager report?
Um, I asked Kim to go first, so she can report on some of the things that she was dealing with and still, um, dealing with, Kim?
Yeah, um, I need to let you know that we did receive information back from the attorney that we do not own the Avon Park Housing Authority property.
You're talking about the up, the playground area?
The playground area. And, um, uh, we do have a reimbursement grant out there. And if we don't get that, um, playground put in, we're gonna lose our grant.
Which grant is that?
The, um, is that...
R-PAC.
R-PAC.
R-PACs, you, there was money to go into that park?
Yeah.
We've, yeah, the grant, the grant was for, um, the exercise equipment at Donaldson Park, Durham Martin, and Lake Tulane.
So, how much more is going to Lake Tulane supposedly?
It was a, I, I don't remember how much exactly the playground equipment was for Lake Tulane, but I think the grant originally was written at a fifty-fifty match.
So, let me...
So, we can still re, the total amount, yeah.
The total amount, I believe, was right around a hundred and twelve thousand.
For all three?
For all three parks.
We can still be, we can reimburse for the other two parks, but just not Lake Tulane, since we do not own it.
What would I, what I would like for you all to do, to, to vote to consider, um, since we've maintained that park forever.
Mm-hmm.
And we built the bathrooms over there, I think we should, um, can, you know, have someone from the staff contact the, the housing department and see if they would deed that over to us.
We're, we're working on that now.
Oh.
In fact, I need to bring that up.
You're going on in.
I didn't go either.
I, I need to, um, let you know that I, I do have a, a conflict on this, because, um, Rick Gilmore at our, at my, the firm that I'm of council to, um, represents the housing authority. And, um, um, so, I mean, I have the two issues that, that have to be resolved, otherwise, um, and I think that he's working on those. Um, that's, this, this is one. The other one's the pilot and, um, you know, payments that are, that we have not been receiving. Um, if, if those are not resolved soon, I, I have said that I'm gonna have to hire conflict counsel to, um, do this, so that I'm not in conflict. And I would suggest, um, Bryant Miller and Olive, once again, they've done this before, for us in the past, and I've been their conflict counsel elsewhere as well. So, um, um, the, um, I just wanted to let you know about that. And, um, but I think they are working on, I know that they're working on that. They're considering transferring that property to you. But, we'll see where that goes. And like I said, um, if by the next meeting, we don't get something resolved, I'll request that you hire Bryant Miller and Olive as conflict counsel.
But, then I have a question. Right now, we have R-PAC dollars on there, that if we don't get this resolved, we can't apply for any other future funding on R-PAC until this thing is, is, is settled.
Well, how, how much time do we have?
So, why don't we, why couldn't, why couldn't we forfeit this portion only, and then reapply for it next time, so that we can apply for other things as well?
What are we gonna do with the playground equipment we've already, it was already delivered?
Oh, we already purchased it? It's been delivered, okay.
It just hasn't been installed.
How long do we have?
The grant expires March sixteenth.
Okay, so, we don't have time for the next meeting. I'll contact him and tell him that. All right, well, I just, I, I guess I need your, your approval then to, to, um, get Bryant Miller and Olive to work on this issue with them.
Well, otherwise, we...
We lose it.
We lose it.
We lose that portion of the grant.
Can we, can we install it in another location?
I'd have to go to the Board of County Commissioners.
What other location could you, would you install it?
I don't know. Just, just to get it done, so you don't lose it's what I'm getting at.
Well, we're paying...
If you're gonna lose the whole thing anyway, what's the difference?
Well, we could go, like Jerry's saying, he can expedite everything and go and see if they would, um, um, deed the property over to us. And once they did that, I mean, the quick claim deed wouldn't take that long, would it?
Yeah, but they need their board meeting. They need to do all of that stuff in time as well.
They probably have time to do all that. They can do like we do sometimes.
Well, special meeting.
Yeah.
That's plan A. What about plan B?
Plan B would just be forfeit it and, and hoard that equipment and put it someplace else, when we need to put it someplace else. But, then again, if you forfeit it, we've already bought it, so we're responsible for it. We would have to pay for everything up to that point, and the county wouldn't reimburse us for anything else. So, but, what it's doing is it's stopping us from applying for more funds. And Sebring's applying, and Lake Placid's applying, and I don't wanna lose out.
So, plan B, wouldn't you like an alternative location, so that you can...
Well, yeah.
Install it?
I would like an alternative location, but, you know, I don't know what you've ordered. I don't know what's there.
We have a lot of parks to put 'em in.
You know, personally, the thing is, the housing authority allows the public to use it. Yeah, we've been maintaining it and all. I'd say just put it where you planned to put it and be done with it, because that's the community that uses it, and they're expecting that, just be done with it.
Can we do that?
We can do that.
It's basically gonna be a donation to the housing authority.
Well, then, by all means, if we can do that according to the grant, then yes, of course, that's the right answer.
No, it wouldn't be reimbursed.
Oh, well...
What do you mean it wouldn't be? What, what do you mean?
You're talking about putting it at Lake Tulane?
Yeah.
If we get, if we put it there, we don't own the property, it's not reimbursed by the grant.
But, if we can get the deed ASAP, then yes.
Yes, then we can, if we can fulfill it before the current expires.
So, in the meantime, while we're working on that, could you look at an alternative location, so that if that does not work out, we can stick it in the ground at another park?
What about the baseball field that's on the south side?
Well, Robert had suggested, um, Durham Martin. We could use that as a, as an alternative location.
But, they just got a whole big set.
Yeah, they just had a brand new thing there.
But, you know, we don't wanna lose the reimbursement, and if we could put it out at Lake Tulane.
Well, you only lose the portion that we've applied for, for that park. You're not gonna lose the other seventy-five percent.
Yeah, the other ones would still be reimbursed. What about the, um, isn't there an old baseball park on the south side?
No, how about Walnut Street? There's nothing there but a basketball court.
Walnut, yep.
But, then let me ask you this question. What would you do about, for the, uh, kids to play up in that area? Because that was the idea, to enhance the, the playground in that area.
We can apply for another R-PAC as soon as this one's done, that we don't, we don't lose this one. And we, if they deed it over to us, then they can give it to, then we can go back to R-PAC the next meeting and say we want it for this park at this point. But, you still have to get permission to move it to Walnut.
Yep, we still have to go to the Board of County Commissioners.
You just don't get reimbursed for your portion. And how much equipment did you say you spent there? It's like twelve, thirteen thousand dollars?
I don't know. The, that was total for all three parks.
Okay. Emma Marie?
Anna Marie Feeny, two thirty-four East Campus Street, Avon Park. I was just thinking, as an alternate, like, location, what about where the Boys and Girls Club used to be, that field right there by the rec center, by MLK?
That was the original location, and Boys and Girls Club said no.
The gates are closed, they're locked. It's not accessible, other than by nonprofits using the fields.
And Boys and Girls Club has...
What about just outside the, uh, gates?
No, because there's, it's all fenced in. The purpose of fencing that in was to prevent the vandalism that was going on over there as well. The Boys and Girls assume maintains that. Their contract is with the city.
What about by that parking lot outside?
I don't, I personally would not like to see it on any part of the MLK field. I think it needs to go into the residential community where it once served, rather than in there, because those gates are locked, and the kids wouldn't have access to it anyway.
Okay. All right.
Well, why don't we see if we can expedite it to get the, uh, to get it deeded over to where we can put it where it really belongs?
Yeah, I mean, that would be great. You just have to get on the phone tomorrow and see what happens, and just kinda work it. I'm of the opinion, let them figure out what they can do to save the money from R-PAC and, you know, put it where you can. If the county says, "You know what? You're gonna have to forfeit that portion of the grant, because it's, you don't own it, and you still have to go back to the county anyway to find another location." Well, for that, you might also just apply for another R-PAC grant later on.
That's a lot of the issues, and the, um, funding that they did going forward, we already did a, a projection for three years. Um, they can change, but, I mean, they've already budgeted in their budget for us to do Donaldson Park this year.
But, Lake Placid just submitted an application that was not in their top three.
Yeah, they bumped up their project.
Right, so, they're giving the communities what they want. They're not really sticking to any major one, two, or three category. So, you know, I think that that's, if, if we change our priorities, then the county would be amenable to our changes of priorities because of this particular situation.
If we find that, um, we're going to have to give up the reimbursement, um, couldn't we just go ahead, if we're not gonna get the reimbursement anyways, and just go ahead and donate it to that, to that park? Where it was gonna go originally? I mean, if we're gonna lose the reimbursement, what's the difference?
Well, we don't know that yet, because...
No, I'm saying if we were.
If you guys will approve me getting conflict counsel, maybe they can get something going on this, on both the pilot and this issue.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
A motion to allow the city attorney to pursue...
Conflict counsel.
Conflict counsel.
Bryant Miller and Olive.
Bryant Miller and Olive to negotiate or deal with this R-PAC fund and the pilot program.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
That was Jim seconded?
Yes.
I'm sorry, council, Councilmember Bernard. Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that particular issue?
I'll just simply tell, it's probably gonna be Nikki Day, we've worked with before on several items for your, your city. Um, and I'll tell her how important this is to get done immediately, okay? um, and I'll tell her how important this is to get done immediately, okay?
Very good. Mr. Schrader?
Well, um, one other thing, uh, Mr. Two Roger is still, um, waiting for an answer about what we wanna do, if we want to be, um, if we want to purchase that lift station from him or not, so if you guys think about it and wanna get, put some thought into it, I'll bring it back to the next, um, council meeting if everybody's okay with it.
I believe at this point, we're still waiting on the engineer report, is that correct?
Yes, uh, he, um, yes, Carl Cool is working on that and I tried to get ahold of him last week, but he was on vacation, so I'll try to get ahold of him this week and see where he's at with it, but.
I don't think we could realistically make a decision until we have that report anyway.
And that's all I have.
My turn. Um, first I'd like to, um, thank Kim for everything she's done, um, I can tell you that she took on a huge task. She's very tired, um, she's gonna take a couple days off this week and, uh, she's been great with me. I don't think anybody stepping in here could do it without her, Danielle next to her, we're several hats as you all know, and our HR manager, um, David Shute back here has been, been great, been working with him. As you know, we're down several key positions. And with that, with the kudos of them because he's deserved more than I can sit here and, and tell you how much the, the staff of yours is working with being understaffed in certain positions, but we've been interviewing, um, I stepped into a lot of urgent items from supervisors, hit me with things that, that, um, are time constrained, that, um, either Kim hasn't, couldn't get to because she had more important things, so that's a lot, that's sitting on my desk, things to look at there that we need to get done, especially when we didn't have a director out at, um, Infrastructure Director, not an engineer, but, um, but anyways, we've been interviewing this week, been, um, interviewing, because we have no administrative assistants upstairs, so we're all answering, you know, the window when somebody comes in and to, and even having to leave the door up when we're doing interviews in case somebody comes in. But, uh, actually, I think all of us, um, were, I don't know, surprised, but it was just nice, we got a lot of people in for, um, Suzie's old position, um, and, um, we've made a choice on that and they've been offered a conditional, um, offer and also the part-time temp for when Linda's out on her medical, um, actually a city resident, um, that's jam up, um, and eventually, and, um, could stick around long enough, maybe for a full-time job came open, they were qualified for, but we had a lot of good people. Finance Director, we had, and David can correct me, I think at first we had five come in, David?
Yeah, we had five that submitted.
We had. We had five, um, off the bat, three of them were weeded out, they had no experience in the area we're looking for. Two of them were very questionable, I looked at them and said, no way, they don't, they really don't meet the, anywhere near the prerequisites of what's we need. On the last day, we had an individual come in, um, and hand Kim a, um, letter, um, that he was interested in it. This person on the resume alone had twenty-eight years, um, Finance Director experience, um, from Ohio in school districts, but since then, this person's a CEO, President of, um, Credit Union who CFOs report to. So we set up an interview with him and I brought in, um, an outside accountant who I worked with at Sheriff's Office, so I think the world of, he's, he's, he's just an extreme, Rob Reed, I don't know if you know him. But I trust Rob because I don't speak CPA language and the other is Kim and the other is David, and when I do interviews, I, I gotta go off and rely on a consultant or professional who, who, um, when they give me their word, this person's good or not, or you don't want them, but anyways, he looked at his resume and he got back, because I, I just asked, I called the major and he approved it and I, I thanked you Darren and passed it on to the Colonel and the Sheriff for, um, allowing you to let Rob come up and, um, is always extreme professionally was. But he looked at the resume and he said, wow, this guy probably knows what he's doing well. We brought him in, we let him, he, um, had some of his questions on the CPA side and, you know, some flew over our heads as David was saying, but when we got done, he said, wow, he said, you guys would be extremely lucky to get this guy. You know, he says, yeah, he's got a little learning curve, just like I'm sitting here and doing, most of us take on new jobs, but he said he'll pick it up quick, this guy come across extremely professionally, he's done a lot of audits, he oversees audits. One thing I'll institute is internal audits. But, uh, anyhow, I, I come to my, to bring that up to you, what we've been doing, and we've been going all day long from Thursday, Friday, and had one this morning, the last for the Administrative Assistant. But I need clarification because Kim was under the impression that when you did the, uh, the Charter Amendment that you all got to pick Director, but I read it and I don't see that in there. But I was confused too from watching all your meetings because, you know, you set different things, but, um, if that, if I am correct and read it, it's not in there, it's still City Manager, can, can hire, um, I'm gonna extend this person a, um, conditional because we're gonna lose him. I mean, he's gonna take, we don't know what he makes, but he knows a lot more than we're offering here, but there's a reason why, he's got a place down in Sunlake, he's had, but he's still working in Ohio, very professional, he's, he needs to. He told us if, if we offer him a job, he'll have to give four weeks, which we understand that, um, very much so seeing he's running a credit union. And, um, I think, you know, we never know, we always take a chance in any employee we hire anyways, you, you never know, but we're really hoping and I guess praying this guy's gonna take the job, we extend it to him, and he needs to come down here for a reason. And, um, it just happened, me on the last day of his way, he said, hey, there's an opening, you might wanna go see it, so I, I will extend that because it's, you know, um, Councilman, um, or, or Councilmember Sutherland made a, a statement one night that when I was watching, said that's probably a more important position than the City Manager, and I said.
Sorry.
No, I, but what did I tell you, I said, I agree with you, I mean, I, or the Sheriff's Office, it was, Rob was my direct report and I was telling them, I learned a lot from him, then he said, no, I learned a lot from you, well, we learn from each other. But it is, it's a very, especially with budgeting coming and, I got the outside auditors I'm meeting with on the twenty-eighth, who I, I know them, they were the same ones that did the Sheriff's Office.
The only thing that I really am hoping that we can find in this individual is, you know, active participation in the procurement of all city business, you know, we witnessed tonight, um, two times where our procurement isn't, it's kinda hit or miss.
Well.
And, you know, if that person could come in and, and help instill those.
When I speak with each of you individually, you're gonna hear a lot of things that I've, I've seen, I just need to look a little farther, but I, I just told them, we need somebody that does that, whether they, they, I would like to see somebody eventually and I'm not saying what I'm gonna be asking for in the next, next budget, or if I can find somebody in-house, we need somebody that does procurement because it's too widespread out with people who, not their fault, they have no idea what they're, they're doing, it's not, it's not their fault, so anyways, I'll extend that. You know, I watched your meetings and as I was telling Kim and David, what I see a lot of times is you could make decisions, but a director who's got the knowledge isn't here, well, I can tell you that the directors will be at every meeting I'm at, so you got a question, you can ask them, they can answer it and you can take your vote and make a decision. We don't have to wait two more weeks because things get pushed off, the can gets kicked down the road and it's stopped, kicked, we need to stop doing it, we need to get these priorities, and I don't have all the answers, I'm first tell you, I, I'm not a, as I, as I've been telling Rick, I'm not a water and sewer guy, but I got a lot of common sense, so, um, or I think I do, maybe I don't, but, um, anyways, the directors will, will be here and, um, I think that's pretty much it, again, I, I'll leave it off with, I just give these kudos and I, you know, I, I got to see him for the last week and I'm on my sixth day, we're counting hours sometimes, but, um, Kim deserves all the kudos there are and, um, she's taken on a lot with, with really, she, she's relied on Danielle as, as I am to get us stuff, find us stuff, because they're all finding out, don't tell me something, show me the backup paperwork. Um, you brought up Piggyback, I've got a question on something with that and, um, so show me the backup on things, so. With that, I look forward to meeting with each one of you, if you just wanna give a call in and grab Kim Ryan, we'll get you on the schedule and, um, I look forward to sitting down with you and, um, I'm very enthusiastic of being here and I, I'm, I, I tell them I don't like the word I, we are building a team and we need that team of directors in order to see what's really going on in the organization and where we need to, um, put most of our time, and I need to pass it on to you and you all make your priorities on, you know, what you want us to accomplish, so.
Very good, Mark, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that concludes our agenda, but we do have one sign up. We've got Myron and Teresa Moody? Moody. Please come up to the microphone and give your name and address, if you will.
My name is Teresa Moody, currently reside at fourteen fifty-four Thousand Roses Drive, Lake Wells, Florida, and we're here about our property at four oh seven West State Street, Avon Park, Florida.
Yes, ma'am, I hear you're interested in, in gifting the property to the city of Avon Park?
Yes, sir.
Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Well, uh, we had it demolished, the city demolished it, and, um, it's been going on for a while because we had, uh, my dad died and my dad's name was on the property, so we had to go through the title company. I went to a real estate attorney, I'm sure you're familiar with the Robbie E. Livingston, and he told me the best thing for us to do was to do a quick claim deed, and we decided we would like to get, gift it to the city.
Okay.
What address is that?
Just four oh seven West State Street, Avon Park, Florida.
Okay, is this a home lot?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, Jerry, do we have any insight into the best way to go about this or?
Well, it's residential lot and there's no, um, passive materials from the demolition, then it's up to you. I mean, whether you wanna, it's, it's a matter of whether you wanna maintain the property, which is, you know, what the problem is probably now, is you have to be mowed and, and regularly and so on, and, um, at some point, you'll need to, you'll, you'll wanna sell it, or, you know, I don't know if, um, you know, if it's in an appropriate location for a pocket park or something like that, but.
It might be good for mitigation, you never know.
Okay.
Let me ask you, is it completely cleared at this point?
Well, we've been talking with code enforcement and they were supposed to send someone out last week to clean the debris off the apartment, I mean, the, the property that when they demolished the home, the people did it, and he told me today, you know, man, I'm standing up there, he said that he's gonna definitely get somebody to go back out there and do it, because we just went by there and it's still there.
The debris from the demo?
And he's in the house, and everything was inside the house. Yeah, it was.
So, so you didn't get a, a demolishing company to do it, you had someone to do it for you?
Actually, the city did it.
Oh, we did it?
Yes.
Oh, well, we'll get.
Yeah, it could have been one of those issues where we demoed it and then we're gonna haul it off and therefore it's still sitting there because we don't have the truck yet to go demo it, it, it might be that. I don't think that the city was derelict in cleaning up its own mess. It's probably sitting there for us to take it away, so I'm okay with accepting the property, but I wanna make sure that it's, you know, completely clear of all whatevers that would prevent us from taking it. I mean, I haven't looked at it, you know, and if we put a for sale sign on it, there might be someone that's willing to, you know, do something with it.
If it's not.
What's the square footage of it? Or the property?
Yeah, I mean, regardless, we're gonna have to have staff take a look at it.
Yeah.
And give us a report so we can get all those details from them. Um, but, you know, for now, we, we certainly appreciate the offer and we'll do our due diligence on our side and get back with you appropriately.
Can you get with the City Manager for that, that way you don't have to, you, you don't need to deal with us, you can deal directly with them.
Right.
I have a question when you.
Yes, ma'am.
No, not for them.
What are, hey, what are park equipment fitting that thing? I'm just kidding, just wondering.
Oh, and the, the debris that she's talking about is, is not the house. It's, it's just some stuff they, they didn't get.
Personal stuff that they didn't wanna keep.
Oh.
No. When, when they tore the house down.
Mm-hmm.
There was some.
Furniture and stuff.
Papers or whatever.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's what was left.
Personal items from the?
No.
No.
It's just.
But it's, but I mean, it's out in the open and it's.
Ashley said she was gonna send somebody out there to see if it was, you know, if they need to take care of it, we did, and they determined that they did.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I would imagine if we got a contractor to do that, which we, hopefully we did.
That should've been part of it.
That, that's part of their contract to call it away.
Exactly.
I'll hold his money.
Okay, all right, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any more?
Nope, that's it.
Actually, we, we just remember, we had a lady bring in, she, uh, she wanted just her letter read off, if I can just read that off.
Go ahead.
This is a very nice lady, came in to see and talk to Kim and I, it's Ms. Helen M. Boone at one zero one two South Lake Boulevard, Avon Park, and I'm gonna read her note she left us. Number one, street signs on Hale McCray and Lake Boulevard and Hood Street and Lake Boulevard. Also, there's a sign that is facing Lake Tulane, not on the coming traffic, it is warning sign, um, congested intersection. Number two, the palm, Lake Tulane Apartments coming off twenty-seven on Hale McCray to the stop sign and make a right turn, palm tree branches, trash and shopping cart, all on Lake Boulevard. Please keep where I live clean, this is the city of Avon Park. Before it stayed clean, now someone is not keeping it clean. If the city is no longer have these apartments, make sure whoever, um, is, um, that they keep it clean. I live across the street, maybe no grass, but I stay very clean. Number three, the last, before the holidays, I asked for a curb from Walden down to Lake Boulevard and stop at Hood Street. Why? Question mark. Put a curb on one side of the street and not the whole, both sides, question mark. Oh, when will the street sweeping begin again on Lake Boulevard? In two thousand, Lake Boulevard was swept very, or every week, what happened? Two question marks, thank you, Helen Boone. What I did with this is I, I also have noticed some signs, one going out on twenty-seven, the stop signs turn. These sta, these signs are a liability to the city.
They are.
So I have given, I gave Robert this, he, he knows about the, the palm trees and he knows about the, um, the curb and that, and he's gonna get with this lady, but I told him priority from me is to fix these signs in the city because they are a liability, so if he got pulled off doing something on the mall, that was me, uh, again, we, and once we know these signs, in fact, Sheriff's Office, deputy, if they get on us, seeing where the stop sign is down, they don't leave until the county comes out and fixes them, it's, I mean, that's, once we know it, it's, it's, I'm sure the county attorney would tell you, it's gonna hit us pretty good that we knew it and didn't fix it, so that's what they're working on.
I wanna say that, um, Piggyback on what Ms. Boone has added, I, I spoke with Robert a couple times about those palm trees, they cut the palm trees down, I mean, the, the leaves and, and they pile them in one spot, and then the wind, and they just sit there, you know, and then, then the wind blew them all over the area, and if Ms. Boone don't mind, she is here tonight, she's come to a couple of our meetings, um, for the last few meetings, I know she's here. And, and thank you so much, Ms. Boone, uh, for, for, uh, bringing this to our attention, and people complain to me all the time and I ask them, come to the City Councilmembers' meeting, let them know what your concerns are. And she's one that has followed through and I really, really appreciate that.
As we do, the way you came in, uh, complained or anything, just, she just wanted to bring it to our attention.
There you go.
Very good.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Now, I wanna. When, when are the dumpsters gonna be picked up off of DeSota Avenue, with the exception of, uh, Heartland National Bank?
I, I asked Robert about it and he said.
Oh, boy, if he fell off the side of the earth, we gonna be in trouble.
We would be because he's got a lot to do. But anyways, he's, he's aware of it, he just hasn't gotten, hasn't gotten anybody back over there to do it yet, but he will right away, he said, so.
It'll be full when it get there, so. I'll send that truck over.
He'll have to empty first.
Please give your name and address.
Uh, Robert Lewis.
In, in the microphone, please.
I own a three oh seven East Campfield.
Okay, your name was Robert Lewis?
Robert Lewis.
Yes, sir, what can we do for you?
I'm trying to sell the property, but the city had put a lien on it. Um, I had rented it to some renters and the city was sending them letters, but they wasn't giving them to me. So I'm trying to get the fine reduced so I can sell the property.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to have more information than that, um.
I was supposed to be on, I had a court date today.
Magistrate, did you go?
To, to hear he say.
Oh, this was it.
Oh, no, this is regular council meeting, the magistrate is something totally different, that's where you discuss, you know, the mail, if you didn't get your mail, you, that's where you discuss it with that individual.
I mean, I asked the code lady out there and she told me I was at the right place right here.
Yeah, but not tonight, not, not.
No, you're at the right place, but not the right meeting.
I got, I got it on my voicemail where code sent me a voicemail saying be here.
Okay.
To get it reduced.
He's wanting a reduction, we don't have any of the information to ask for approval for the reduction.
I waited for a month, for me almost a month to get this court.
It needs to be added to the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
So.
We'll get the information from. We'll get, we'll get the information from code enforcement as to what the fines are and everything.
I mean, I've already waited a month, I need to sell the place.
Well, we'll, we have to go through the.
I got another place I want to buy.
We have to go through the process.
The council does not have the authority to reduce fines, only liens. So it has to go through the process with the code, with the code enforcement, get into liens and then you can do something with the lien, but.
Yeah, that, there's a seven thou.
I've told you my opinion on that already, so.
There's a seven thousand dollar lien, that's why I'm here.
Is it in compliance now?
Yes, yes, it's in compliance, but I want to get it reduced, so I don't have to pay so much.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, we need to check with code because if it is in compliance, as you say, that should have had to have gone back to the magistrate as well, showing that it is in compliance. So we'll get with code enforcement and, um, they probably, do they have your contact information? I'm sure they do.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and we'll have them contact you as soon as we, but we have to have more information before we can just, before council can make any kind of a decision on something like that.
Yeah, we don't have anything in front of us tonight, other than you.
Right.
And, you know, we have to work off of, you know, records and things and have them put that together. So you might have to come back. And if you do so, maybe we can put you at the beginning of the agenda, that way you won't have to sit through the whole meeting.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I don't mind sitting, but they told me to be here at six o'clock, I was here. And then the code lady said, I was at the right place.
Yeah.
I understand your frustration, sir.
Thank you.
Bureaucracy is a terrible thing.
I have one question, um, a few, oh, not for you, sir, I'm sorry, thank you. A few meetings ago, um, Mr., there was a gentleman came before us about purchasing some property that the city had cleaned off and he was cleaning it off and you were supposed to have been, um, checking in that for us, Jerry. Do you remember that? It was on, uh, Williams Gray Court.
Well, I don't know why to be checking on them, because you have to go through the process of, of, um, um, you know, putting that property up for bid.
That's what we were supposed to have been doing.
Well, yeah.
You know, I thought you was going to do.
No, I don't do that.
Get back with us, the process that, to do that.
Oh, all right.
I thought that's what it was, now I'm not for sure.
Well, I can certainly.
It's in our procurement policy on how to sell stuff when, you know.
It's right, yeah, it's listed, I put it in your procurement policy several years ago. It's from, but I, but I'd be happy to go, go over that with the staff. I'm going to be meeting with, uh, the city manager on Thursday, so I'll put that on my.
Because I remember he came to us and asked us about it and I remember you said.
He still wants to buy it?
Yeah, he still wants to buy it. He's waiting on us to make a decision.
Very good. Okay.
And Jerry, you know, I mean, I know that we have this policy, I mean, is there a way to streamline that or is that dictated by Florida statute? I mean, could we have like, I mean, would it be any simplif, could we simplify it? Because I know right now, you have to go to bid, blah, blah, blah. I mean, is that the simplest way to do it?
Uh, I'll check on that, but I think the way, the way it's going to end up is there could be a minimum price, value or whatever, that you could say, well, if it's below this, then we can do it this way, you know. But it's really nobody, you can't call anybody out, you know, it's really, if, it really encourages shenanigans if, if people call in and you say, well, let's let this person have it because they, they said they wanted it because they might be related or friends or whatever, so I, I, I just, you know, I hate to see that sort of situation. I'll see if there's something we can do to, to, to streamline it, but it's probably going to be pretty much bid. That's what most people do, they put it up for bid.